Welcome to I A C E. Today we have to discuss target S S C C G L C H S L pure math session five. Okay, question number one, which one of the following, what is the following the value of the expression? Right, cos thirty sine sixty, cos thirty-five, cos fifty-five by cos sixty-five plus cos twenty-five. Right, so if you observe, you know the value of cos thirty and cos sine sixty. Cos thirty sine sixty, right? So what is the cos thirty, cos thirty value is root three by two into. Ah, sine sixty, sine sixty is also how much, root three by two into. So, so this is a cos thirty-five and this is cos fifty-five. Cos fifty-five, how we can write sine thirty-five on right? Right, so this is a cos thirty-five, sine thirty-five by. So, cos C plus cos D. What is cos C plus cos D formula? Cos C plus cos D formula is two cos of C plus D by two. Cos C minus D by two. How now, so cos C plus cos D formula is two cos C plus D by two and cos C minus D by two. So here, two cos. C plus D by twenty, sixty-five plus twenty-five is how much? Ninety, ninety by two is forty-five into cos C minus D by two. That means sixty-five minus twenty-five is forty, forty by two is twenty. Okay, right, so this is how much, three by four. And here, three by eight into two cos thirty-five, sine thirty-five on right. Yes, I am adding, so multiply and divide. So, three by eight into two, cos eighty-five, sine thirty-five into two into. What is cos forty-five? One by root two into cos twenty. Okay, right, so this is. What is this, two sine theta, cos theta, sine two theta? What is sine two A formula? Sine two A formula is two sine A, cos A. So, two sine A, cos A is sine two A. So this we can write as sine two A on right. Three by eight into sine two A, two A means seventy. By here, root two, or root two is cancelled. And a root two into sine, sorry, cos twenty degrees. Right, sine seventy and cos twenty, both are same or not? So both are cancelled, so finally what we are getting? So, three by eight root two, so three by eight root two is the right answer. So, so multiply with the root two by root two, then what we will get? Three root two by sixteen, so what is the value? The value is how much? Three root two by sixteen, so option B is the right answer. Okay, right, so careful here, we have to do, this is the formula we have to use. Cos C plus cos D as well as sine two A, here into formula second use here. Okay now, right, next one, question number two. What is X, X is how much? Root three plus one by root three. Y is how much? Root three minus one by root three, then find the value of. X power four plus Y power four minus two, two X square, Y square. And then how we can write X square minus Y square whole square and right? So right, that is in the form of A minus B whole square or not? Now see here, X, what is X? Root three into root three, three plus one, four by root three. And what is Y? Y is root three minus one, two by root three. So what is X square? X square is sixteen by three and Y square is four by three. Simply substitute here, that is sixteen by three minus four by three whole square. That is twelve by three, twelve by three means four, four square is how much? Sixteen, so option A is the right answer. Question number three, third question, C. The area of equilateral triangle is given, the area of equilateral triangle is given. Right, then, the side of the equilateral triangle is six centimeters less than the length of the rectangle. One length, rectangle is there, the rectangle length, how it is? So the side of the equilateral triangle is six less than the length of rectangle. So our rectangle length is six more than the side of the equilateral triangle. And similarly, eight more than the breadth of the rectangle. And eight more than the breadth of the rectangle means eight less than the breadth of equilateral triangle. Right side of equilateral triangle. Then what is the area of the triangle? First, what is the area of equilateral triangle? Root three by four, A square, that is given how much? Eighty-one root three, cancel. So A square equal to eighty-one by four means, so what is A? Nine, two, eighteen, so A equal to how much? Eighteen we are getting. Now here, first condition, the side, the side of a rectangle is six less than the length of the rectangle. So length of the rectangle, so the length of the rectangle is. The side, sorry, the side of the equilateral triangle, the side of the equilateral triangle is. Side of the equilateral triangle, A equal to. The side of the equilateral triangle is six less than the length of the rectangle. Length of the rectangle is six. So L plus. Sorry, L minus. Sure, the side of the equilateral, the side of the equilateral triangle. My side of the equilateral triangle is six less than the length of the rectangle. Length of the rectangle is six. And it is, the side of the equilateral triangle is eight more than the breadth of the rectangle. Breadth of the rectangle is. Then, what is the area of the rectangle? What is the area of the rectangle? L, L equal to how much? A plus six, A plus six means A is how much? Eighteen plus. Eighteen plus six, that is how much? Twenty-four. And here, this is, so what is B? B equal to A minus eight, that is eighteen minus eight is how much? So area formula, L into B, that is twenty-four into ten is how much? Two hundred forty. So what is the area of the rectangle? Area of the rectangle is how much? Two hundred forty, into simple conditions. A equal to L minus six, B A equal to. B plus eight hundred conditions. We can find whatever we want, that we can find. Then, next question. The ratio between the numbers of two sides of a regular polygon are in the ratio of three to five. Two sides, the sides are in the ratio of, sides and the ratio only, sides are in the ratio of three to four. And three N equal to five. So two sides, three N and five N, both sides are in the ratio of three to five. And the interior angles, so the interior angles are in the ratio of five to six. So interior angle is five to six. Then, number of sides of a polygon in the, respectively, respectively, what are the number of sides? One way, we can go through O T P. Options will. Second thing, direct condition right away. So what is the internal angle formula, interior angle formula? What is the interior angle formula? The interior angle formula is N minus two by N into one eighty degrees. Right, so what is N here? The first one, N is how much? Three N, that means three N minus two by three N into one eighty. So that is the interior angle, the first one. Second interior angle is five N minus two by five N into one eighty degrees. Equal to how much? So this is the interior angle. Sides, we can find the interior angle. If you know the sides, interior angle formula is N minus two by N into one eighty degree. Same thing, is equal to, what is the ratio? It is equal to five by six. They cancel, N, N also cancel. So. Three N minus two by three into five by five N minus two equal to five by six. Five, five, cancel. Three ones, three twos. So if you cross multiply, six N minus four equal to, six N minus four equal to five N minus two. And N equal to two. N equal to two means, what are the sides? N equal to two means six and ten. Three N five one, if N equal to two, three two is six, five two is ten. So what are the sides of the polygon? Five, six and ten, so option C is the right answer. So need a condition. Okay now, right, then, right, question number five. What is the simplified value of, simplified value of two of. Sin A minus tan A into cos A by. Sin A, cos A, sin A, cos A into one minus cos A. Into one minus cos A minus sine cube A. Right, so this we have to find. So whenever a trigonometric expression or an equation is given. If an expression is given, equation is given, what you have to do? We have to assume the angle. Right, but three conditions follow. What are the three conditions? While assuming the angle, question should not be undefined, options should not be undefined and options should be unique. If options say, any unique answers, no problem. Options also undefined, so question is undefined. So I will. Sin zero, 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 tan zero is also zero. Zero minus zero, zero into anything is zero. By sine zero, zero, zero by zero. undefined. So zero. Ninety. Ninety, what is tan ninety? Tan ninety is how much? undefined. But ninety degrees also. So what we have to go for A equal to forty-five degrees. So A, we have to go with A as forty-five. So forty-five degrees. But instead of that. So, if you have a trigonometric expression you are observing, assume angle. So this is the first method. Another method also we can follow, that is by taking a right angle triangle. A simple right angle triangle you can take. So a right angle triangle. So you can forward, right? So three, four, five and a right angle. Any right angle triangle you can take. You can proceed, so proceed. Okay, so this is another method. You go with angles, we are forty-five degrees angle substitute. Problem, no problem. Or else you can go with three, four, five combination. Okay, this method. So. So if you have a trigonometric expression. Expression whenever you are observing with one angle, then directly you can go with three, four, five. Single angle. Three, four, five combination. A B, A two A. We can't go with the right angle triangle combination, okay? Right angle triangle combination, anytime you can take it for a trigonometric expression, but with a single angle. So now, three, four, five, right, substitute here now two into. What is sine? Sin means opposite by hypotenuse, that is four by five minus tan A. Tan A is four by three into cos A. What is cos A into three by five? How now, so three by five by. Sin A, four by five into three by five into one minus. Cos means, three by five minus sine is four by five whole cube. So that is, that only we have to simplify. So that is two into, here what will come? Twelve minus twenty and minus eight. So minus eight by fifteen into three by five by. So, four by five into three by five into one minus three by five is two by five minus sixty-four by one twenty-five. Now simplify, three ones, three fives cancel. So. Five two is sixteen, minus sixteen by twenty-five into. So denominator, what is there here? One twenty-five, one twenty-five means it goes to numerator, one twenty-five by. Here what will come? Four threes, twelve, twelve twos, twenty-four, twenty-four, sixty-four, minus twenty-four is minus forty. So minus forty, ones, fives, minus, minus cancel, five ones, five eights, eight ones, eight two. So answer is how much? Two, so option B is the right answer. So if you have a trigonometric expression, equation. So always try to assume the angles. Angles. You like say, go with three, four, five, three, four, five triplet code. Actually, even you are not getting any idea about question. Question. Easily we can do the problem. If you are able to assume the angles or we can take a right angle triangle. Right angle triangle. So. Okay, very, very important model and repeatedly compulsorically. Four questions. Two questions or three questions. Okay, right, then, next one, question number six. In triangle P Q R, three points A, B, C are such that A lies on P Q, B lies on Q R and C lies on P R. If A Q, A Q equal to B Q, B R equal to C R, A P C equal to sixty degrees, then find angle A, B, C. First we will draw the diagram, in triangle A, B, C. In triangle A, B, C, some points is telling. So, A points, sorry, in triangle P Q R, sorry. In triangle P Q R. In triangle P Q R, what is telling? A lies on P Q, A lies on P Q, B lies on Q R, B lies on Q R. And C lies on P R, C lies on P R. And A Q equal to B Q, A Q, B Q. And B R, C R, B R, C R. Okay, if A P C equal to sixty degrees, if this angle is sixty degrees, then find angle A, B, C. A, B, C angle. What is this theta angle? Very simple, so what is condition? Simple, I am taking it as sixty degrees already. So remaining. Assume it is an equilateral triangle. Then P Q R. Equilateral triangle. P Q R, let it be assumed as equilateral triangle. Then equilateral triangle. Now tell me, sixty, sixty, sixty. Now here, this is a which triangle? Isosceles triangle. Isosceles triangle, the corresponding angle is equal. Sixty and one, one, remaining angle. Sixty. Same, this is sixty. Sixty, so this is how much? Sixty, angle on a straight line is how much? One eighty, so that is sixty plus theta plus sixty is how much? One eighty, and this theta equal to how much? Sixty degrees. Sixty degrees. Option A is the right answer. So. Instead of theta. So happy if I assumed as equilateral. Then equilateral triangle. So sixty degrees. So already sixty. Remaining. Equilateral triangle. So anytime, always try to assume it as equilateral triangle or a right angle. These two triangles. Okay, right, question number seven. In a circle, the diameter is twenty-six, means radius is thirteen and the length of the cord is twenty-four. What is the perpendicular distance of the cord from the center? For circles. In a circle, a cord is drawn, A B is a cord. So A B is a cord. If you draw a perpendicular distance from the center. Center. Immediately the cord divides into two parts. What is the cord length? Twenty-four means this is twelve and this is twelve. And he is telling, the diameter of the circle means the radius of the circle is how much? Thirteen, then what is the perpendicular distance? Here if you observe, what we are observing? A simple right angle triangle triplet code we are observing. Twelve thirteen means, what is a triplet code? Five, twelve, thirteen. So what is the perpendicular distance? What is O M? O M equal to how much? Okay, so you diagram. You diagram. Finally what we are observing? A right angle triangle we are observing with a triplet code, clear triplet code. So five, twelve, thirteen, so what is answer? Five is the right answer, okay? Find the value of the theta for the given expression. Cosine squared theta minus two by sine squared theta is one. Already we have options, simply substitute the angles which is satisfying, that is the right answer. Seventy-five, fifteen. First thirty, forty-five. Then we will go, so for example. Go with forty-five, so very simple. What is cosine forty-five or root two? Root two whole square is two minus two by. So two by cosine, that is two, two, two cancel and two minus one is how much? One exactly tell it or not? So what is theta? Theta equal to how much? Forty-five degrees. Very simple, so directly we can substitute the values. Values. O T P through options, okay? If you have a theta. Don't find theta. Already we have, we know the values. So simply substitute the values and then next one. So this model. What is given? So if you multiply here, what will come? Three X minus X X cancel two equal to three by X. And X plus one by X model. Three X minus three by X equal to how much? And what is X minus one by X? X minus one by X is two, so two by three. So X minus one by X. So. X minus one by X equal to A. If X minus one by X equal to A, what is X square plus one by X square? A square plus two. What is X cube minus one by X cube formula? A cube plus three A. Here is the formulas, A square plus two and A cube plus three A. Right, same thing here we have to substitute. What is X cube minus one by X cube? X cube minus one by X cube means A cube plus three A. That is two by three whole cube plus three into two by three. So two by three whole cube plus two, three into two by three minus. Minus, X square plus X, one by X square. X, that means A square, that means A square means two by three whole square plus. Right, three, three cancel. Eight by twenty-seven plus two minus four by nine minus two. Two, two cancel, so what is L C M? Twenty-seven is the L C M. Eight minus, ah, three, four, three is twelve. And minus four by twenty-seven, so what is answer? Minus four by twenty-seven, option C is the right answer. So. X plus one by X model. So classroom. Any problem, A problem. So. Express one by X model, four models. Four A four models. So the first model. Directly, direct formula substitution model. Formula. You can. So four models. Along with twenty-four formulas, any express one by X question easily we can do. Next question. Fifty-four root two X cube plus five root five Y cube equal to three root X plus root five into. A X square minus B X Y plus C Y square, then what is the value of five A minus three root ten B plus six? A Q plus B Q formula. What is A Q plus B Q? A plus B into A square. So A plus B already is there, so this how we can write. So three root two, three root two X whole cube and right? So three cube and twenty-seven, twenty-seven to fifty-four root two. The. Root five, root five Y whole cube. And the A formula. A Q plus B Q formula. What is A Q plus B Q formula? A Q plus B Q formula. A plus B into A square minus A B plus B. So. Right, and what is A plus B? Three root two X plus root five Y, A plus B into. So, A square, what is A square? Square just say, three, and three square, nine, nine two, sir. Eighteen X square minus. X Y minus A B, A B. So A B, and three into, three root two into five. So three root ten, so three root ten X Y plus C. Next, B square, B square means, so root five whole square means five Y square. So this we can expand in the form of A plus B into A square minus A B plus B square. In a clear. What is A? A. Compared. How much? What is B? What is B? Three root ten and C equal to how much? Now substitute. Five A minus three root ten plus six. Five A and five into, A means how much? Eighteen minus three root ten B. Three root ten B. Three root ten into, what is B? B and then the. Three root ten plus six into C and then the. Right, so that is ninety minus ninety plus thirty. So what is the answer we are getting? Thirty, simplification, only thing, so what is answer? Option B is the right answer. A Q minus B Q formula. That's it, okay? So then expand. So. Automatically will get the A, B, C values. Question number eleven, question. Find the total surface area of the cylinder whose radius is equal to the radius of the spear. Spear radius, cylinder radius both are same and also having the surface area one fifty-four meter square. Okay, what is the surface area of the spear? One fifty-four, then find the, and height is twice the radius. Height. Twice the radius, two times. And what we have to find total surface area of the cylinder? What is the total surface area of the cylinder? Total surface of the cylinder is two pi R into H plus R. So one thing is given, surface area is given, what is the surface area? What is the surface area of a spear? Four pi R square is given. Four pi R square is one fifty-four. One fifty-four, we have to find two pi R into H plus R. Two pi R into. What is H? Two R, and two R. And two R plus R. And. We find. Three, two, just six, pi R square. Six pi R square. So, four pi R square, one fifty-four. Four pi R square, one fifty-four. Pi R square. One fifty-four by four. We. Six pi R square. One fifty-four by four into six. Twos, threes, two ones, two, seventy. Seventy-sevens, that is how much? Two hundred thirty-one, so what is answer? Option B is the right answer, two thirty-one is the right. Four pi R square, one fifty-four. What is given? Four pi R square, one fifty-four. What we have to find? Six pi R square. So, four parts. Four parts, one fifty-four. Two thirty-one. So directly answer is how much? Two thirty-one, okay now, right, then next one. The ratio between, the ratio of two different angles of isosceles triangles. Different angles of isosceles triangles are three to one. What is the difference between the largest and the smallest angle of a triangle? If all angles are integral values. All angles are integral values. So. Three is to one ratio. Two different angles. So. Two angles equal. So these two angles are equal. And. Equal angle. But he is telling, all angles are integral. And. So three X. Three X. Remaining equal angles X. Inco chance. Another chance, what is the chance? Three X. You. Two different ways. Isosceles triangle. Three is to one means. Three. And. If you choose. What is the sum? Sum is how much? Seven X, the sum of angles is how much? One eighty, seven X one eighty. X is integral value. Not. Right. Five X. Five X. X equal to. Thirty-six. Hundred percent will get the integral values. So X thirty-six. Hundred percent, now what is the difference between? What is the difference between the largest and the smallest angle? What is the largest angle? So three X minus smallest angle, X, that is how much? Two X, X already we know thirty-six, that means how much? Seventy-two, so option A is the right answer. So. We can assume. All angles are integral values. Integral values, the second condition is not at all applicable. Applicable. One eighty by seven. We will get not integral value, fraction. Fraction. Always we have to get an integral value, integral value. Okay now, right, next one. The length and breadth of a rectangle A are in the ratio of five to four. A rectangle A and a rectangle. Then length and breadth. Five is to four. And its area is two zero one more than the area of the rectangle B, whose sides are seven and seventeen. And what is the difference between the perimeter of the both the rectangles? Want a rectangle. Wanka rectangle undhi, two, this is rectangle A and this is rectangle B. Rectangle A, rectangle B undhi, this seven seventeen and. So diini area antundanta, diini area ke, what is this area? Seventeen into seven, that is how much? One one nine, that is the area. Kaney chetnaadu, A rectangle area ella undanta, rectangle A nedi? Y area kanta ente kundhi, how much it is more? Two hundred one ekku undante, one one nine kanta, two hundred one ekku undanta. And anta three hundred twenty undanta. So what is the area of the A, A area anta three hundred one. So B area anta? One one ninety, A area antavutundi, three hundred twenty avutundi, one hundred ninety and two hundred one ekku undi. And its ratio is given how much? Five is to four X and so five into, what is the area we know? Area is L into B and five X into four X equal to how much? Three hundred twenty, howna? So twenty ekada, twenty sixteens, right? So X square equal to emochindi sixteen and X equal to how much? Four X antochindi, four X four ochindante, what is five X? Twenty, idanta sixty, right? Ite varu emodutunadu, difference between the perimeters, perimeters difference. What is the perimeters difference, difference emavutundi? So what is the perimeter here sixteen, so this is twenty sixteen. Perimeter of A, what is the perimeter of A? Forty, fifty, sixty and seventy two, howna thirty two plus seventy two minus. Ah this perimeter, diini perimeter emavutundi? Ah so seventeen plus seventeen, seventeen plus seven anta? Twenty four, twenty four plus twenty four anta? Forty eight, so seventy two minus forty eight and anta twenty four. So what is the difference between the perimeter? Twenty four, howna, eemanadu? B sides ichadu seventeen and seven. Seventeen, seven ithe, dani area antavutundi, one one ninety. Mani A area emchetnaadu, E in one one nineteen kanta, two zero one ekku undanta. And dani area anta three twenty, varu idi three twenty ithe, so X automatically will get four ochindi. Varu X four ochindante, sides teliste, perimeters difference manam find out chelima? Easily we can find, howna? Question number fourteen, see. The ratio between the angles of a quadrilateral are in the ratio of three is to four is to five is to six. Two third of the largest angle of this quadrilateral is equal to the smaller angle of a parallelogram. Then what is the value of the largest angle of the parallelogram? Hindi, so first we have to find the largest angle of the parallelogram. Largest angle of quadrilateral, largest angle of quadrilateral. What is the largest angle of quadrilateral we are, quadrilateral we are observing there? So the largest angle is how much? Six by total sum is how much? Nine, ah ten plus eight, that is eighteen into, in a quadrilateral, the sum of four angles is how much? Three hundred sixty degrees, right? So three sixty degrees means eighteen ones, eighteen twos means how much? One twenty degrees, so the largest angle of the quadrilateral is how much? One twenty, but what he is telling? Two third of the largest angle of a quadrilateral is equal to the smaller angle of the parallelogram. What is the smallest angle of parallelogram? Smallest angle of parallelogram, parallelogram smallest angle is. Two third of the largest angle of parallelogram, two third of, what is the largest angle of parallelogram? One twenty three ones, three forty, that is how much? One twenty, so in a parallelogram, in a parallelogram. Sorry, not one twenty, eighty ekada, eighty. Forty two is eighty, in a parallelogram, the smallest angle is how much we are getting? Eighty we are getting, right? So in a parallelogram, the smallest angle is eighty means what is the largest angle, the largest angle is how much? Hundred degrees, some should be how much? One eighty degrees, so if the smallest angle is eighty, what is the largest angle? Hundred, so option C is the right answer, okay? Right, next one. So if A square plus B square plus C square plus four C equal to two A, two of A minus B minus six. What is the value of A plus B plus C whole square? Charandi, diinela raichu, just see A square, this plus two A if come this side. Two A itus themavutundi, minus two A plus okavannasukunanae na, okay? Similarly, B square, indukala rasukunan one? So A square minus two A plus one is A minus one whole square, howna? Similarly, B square minus two B will come this side, what happens? Plus two B plus one. Again I am writing here and third one, what is the third? C square plus four C plus four and note chey. Yepurcharandi, one plus one plus four is how much? Six, E minus six itusthe, plus six ena? Exactly tell it or not, so equal to how much? Zero, equal to emindi, zero ayindi. And how we can write diini manavela raichu? A minus one whole square, this one is B plus one whole square. And this is C plus two whole square equal to zero, howna? Right, so what is the value of A? Varu ani zero level kati, idi zero plus zero plus zero is how much? Zero and what is A, A is how much? One, B is how much? Minus one and C is how much? Minus two, howna? So we have to find A plus B plus C whole square. What is A plus B plus C whole square? One one cancel, one minus one minus two whole square, one one cancel, that is how much? Four, so what is A minus, A plus B plus C whole square? Four, so option A is the right answer, okay? Right, next one, see. Question number sixteen. X plus four by X equal to two, then find the value of two X square plus X by, plus eight by two X cube minus four X square. Idi second model manam nechkundam, express one by X lo second model we will discuss. So yepudena sari, so an expression you are observing, expression kannupaduthu, X plus one by X model lo undhi and. Then immediately what you have to do means, first E expression lo X ochetatika manavajis chey skal. So what is first X undhi? So ekadu kuda X kavali and here first part X undal and what we have to take common? X, two X square nunchi anta common this X usundi? Two X kama dial, adu okay okapanchi al. So if you do that one, automatically problem is over. So numerator lo two X common this, what will come here? X plus, so what will come here? One by two, again two two cancel, X ochinda, plus four by X. So four two eight, X X cancel, eight saripenda? By, so same denominator kuda allaane, two X kama this nandhi, cancel jadanke. If you take two X common, what will come here? X square minus, if you take two X, what will come and what will come? Minus two X, cancel ena? And what is X plus four X, X plus, X plus one by four X bodilka manavela raichu? Two raichu, two plus one by two by. So cross multiply here, if you cross multiply, what will come? X square plus four by X equal to how much? Two and X square minus two X equal to how much? Four, so in place of X square minus two X, what we can write? Four we can write or not, so here four, that is five by two into, so one by four, that is how much? Five by eight, so five by eight is the, oh so economist take visa? Oh minus four kadi di, sorry, minus four. So this is minus four, so minus five by eight is the right answer, so option C is the right answer. So idi another model, E model lo mit chal sindi manandhi, yepudena illa expression kannupadindande? Ekadu X undi kavatti, so X chialandhi, E chial, what we have to take common? Ado karku choosekagaleka, automatically remaining anta sete potundi, okay na? Right, then next one, question number seventeen. So see, twenty secant square theta minus eleven tan square theta is thirty six. Then find the value of three plus two sine theta cos theta by one minus two sine theta cos theta. We know, what we know secant square theta minus tan square theta equal to how much? One and delskada? Secant square theta minus tan square theta, one and delskada, this how we can write, manavela raichu? So nine secant square theta plus eleven, plus eleven secant square theta. Minus eleven tan square theta equal to thirty six and raicha? Whether we can write or not, so eleven plus nine is twenty or not? Why I am writing secant square theta minus tan square theta equal to how much? One and take famously nine secant square theta, if you take eleven as common, what will come here? Secant square theta minus tan square theta equal to thirty six. So this value is how much? One and nine secant square theta equal to, e musundi, thirty six minus eleven, that is twenty five. And what is second theta? Second theta is five by three, so what is the value we are getting? Second theta, second theta is five by three. But second theta, five by three and from right angle triangle, right angle triangle, what is secret? Secret means hypotenuse by adjacent, hypotenuse is how much? Five, by adjacent is how much? Three, so this is how much? Four, now simply we have to substitute the values, value substitute adama, three plus two into, two into. What is sine, sine means four by five into, so cos means three by five. By same thing, one minus two into four by five into three by five. Howna, right, now see here, what will come? L C M twenty five and seventy five plus, ekada, L C M is twenty five. Seventy five plus, ah eight, eight three sir, twenty four by twenty five. By twenty five minus twenty four and one by twenty five. Twenty five, twenty five cancel, that is how much? Ninety nine, so what is answer we are getting? Ninety nine, so option C is the right answer, okay? So yepudena and, manaki second to tan kannupadindande, we are observing means. Immediately manaki identity guttaravol, what is the identity we have to remember? Secant square theta minus tan square theta equal to how much? One and a identity, that's automatically problem is very simple, okay na? Right, next one, question number eighteen, eighteenth question, charandi. In a triangle A B C, a median A D is drawn, right? Hindi, in triangle A B C, A B C and a okadha triangle undhi. In triangle A B C, A D is the median. A D is median, median means it divides into two equal parts, right? So line B is drawn such that E is point on A C. E is point on A C, B and edo kada draachialandha? B is drawn on A C such that E is a point on A C and A equal to A C is two is to three. Idantare ratio undanta? Two is to three. And the line B intersects A D at F. A D ne ekadu intersect chesindanta? F degir intersect chesindan. If the area of A B F E is sixty four, area of A B F anta? Sixty four ithe, what is the area of the triangle A B C? A B C triangle emavutundi, another. Right, so equal ga undante, it is in what ratio? One is to one ratio ena? One is to one ratio, so already manam nechkundam. Classroom lo mass point geometry concept. Mass point geometry concept enchaptundi, when we have to remember mass point geometry concept. In a triangle, if you know C two C V Ns. If two C V Ns intersect each other, if two C V Ns intersect each other and two ratios, if you know. Rendu ratios or rendu C V Ns, minimum two, two C V Ns and. Easily we can find the remaining all ratios. Anni ratios manam chey chani, diendlo rendu model chetam. Okaku model, different, different cases koda manu classroom lo discuss chesta. Right dantlo, we know that two ratios, two ratios ithe. So mass point geometry M P Z concept. So by using M P Z concept, so I am finding the remaining ratios, remaining ratios find out just nam charandi. So assume C, C ne assume chandi, E N value delso, E N value delso, that product I am assuming. So what is C C I am assuming as? Two C ne ne name assume jesa no? Two one, right, then, enchaptundi? Both sides, the weights must be balanced, both sides weight balance ayundali. So itu pakka two undante, two into one, two unda, itu pakka kuda two yundal, so B is also two. What is the mass of D, D okka mass emavutu, there are some of the extremes and chetkundam, that is? Two plus two, that is how much? Four, similarly, two threes, six, six means three into two, so the mass of A is how much? Three and E, E mass is how much? Three plus two, that is how much? Five, then we have to write the ratios raialandkuna. What is the ratio E four? Paina raayandi, painu nadi kindra raayandi and chetta. Similarly, this is five and this ratio is two. And finally, what you have to check, final ga maname enchekchali? The sum of the C V Ns is same or not? As per our calculation, the ratio sum is equal or not uncheckchial. Four plus three anta seven and five plus two anta seven, exactly tell it or not? Telli inante, hundred percent it forms a triangle, adhee ratios thode form, thekay, veree ratios thot form eh chanceli. Right now, yepudu manaki ratio delso, kani area find out chialka? Mano, this is also we discuss in a, in our classroom. If two adjacent triangles and having a common side. Rendu adjacent triangles unay okka common side tocharandi, idi idi rendu adjacent triangles and having a common side. Illa undae, if the bases are in the ratio of X is to five, areas also in the ratio of X is to five ena? B, areas, bases X is to five lo undae, areas kuda X is to five lo unda yaleda? But same thing charandi, A B F E triangle, this triangle, tikpadanacharandi, A B F and this triangle. So these two are adjacent triangles are not same line, edges and triangles and having a common. Howna, varu the bases are in the ratio of four is to three, bases are in the ratio of four is to three ithe. Areas antare ratio lo undai, and same ratio undante? Four parts anta manak delso, four parts is how much? Four parts is how much? Sixty four ithe, one part anta sixteen, manaki any parts kavali? Three parts and three parts is how much? Forty eight and E, area, area ani round chesnanu, so this area is also how much? Forty eight, howna? Same concept mali yepurcharandi, so this area, varu ekadu kuda. This is a triangle, so V triangle, E triangle, rendu adjacent triangles ena? Varu adjacent triangles undi, areas ratio same gundala? Varu basis antare ratio lo unay, one is to one ratio lo unay and. So areas kuda antare ratio lo undai, one is to one, it total antare ratio lo undi, sixty four plus? Sixty four plus forty eight is how much? Two and sixty four plus forty eight, four two and one thirty two. Sixty four plus forty eight, one, four, sorry, twelve, one, one zero two, sorry. One zero two and one one two, howna? So two one mente, ah one one two, so idi one one two unnadi. So varu left side one one two undante, one ratio one one two undante, mali E ratio kuda antuntundi? One one two yu undundi, howna? Left side mottham triangle one one two undante, right side triangle kuda antuntundi? One one and area of A B C antuntundi? One one two plus one one two, that is how much? Two two four, so what is the area? Area is two hundred twenty four. Similar model questions manam, classroom lo kuda manan chesta. So whenever symmetric, sorry, C V Ns and two ratios, then stay remaining, any ratios chala easyga find out chey. And also adjacent, ah yepren a triangles concept undi? Yepren a two triangles adjacent and having a common and if the bases are in the ratio of X is to Y. Areas also in the ratio of X is to Y. Make mass point geometry concept teliste, this problem is very, very easy, chala easyga chey. Okay na, right, then, question number nineteen, see. Area of rectangular piece is twenty five centimeters long and forty four centimeters wide. Is cylindrical is formed by rolling the paper along its breadth? And what is the volume of the cylinder? What is the volume of the cylinder? Pi R square H, howna? In our cylinder volume, what is there? Pi is there, e mundi? Pi yundhi, pi yundhi, compulsory, that question has to divide with eleven or not? Which option is divided with eleven? Option A is the right answer, E matrami eleven to divide avutundaleda? So directly we can mark answer, A is the right answer, so problem chialsne panailedu, induku? In a volume of a cylinder, cylinder volume lo e mundi? Cylinder volume lo e mundi, pi yundhi? Manavolum lo ga, manafarmala lo ga, ni pay ga undai, manafarmala lo pay undi, what we have to do? Simply divide with eleven, eleven to divide chandi, which option is divided with eleven, that is the right answer ankunna. Howna, so two options eleven to divide ithe, seven to divide chandi enchaptam. So only one option is divided with eleven, so directly we can mark the answer, so what is the answer? Three point eight five is the right answer, problem manan chaddam, charandi. So okadha rectangular sheet undhi? What is the rectangular sheet, the rectangular city is ah twenty five, ah twenty five by forty four. Illanti rectangular sheet undi, so diine roll chesero, roll chesae? Okadha cylinder form ayindi, howna? So illa cylinder form ayindi. La cylinder form mayde emavutundi, charandi? Diinela patugana, illa roll chesae, if you roll like this, illa roll chesae? Then what is the height, height emavutundi? The height of the cylinder is exactly equal to twenty five, height antavutundi? Twenty five and so illa roll chesae, charandi, illa roll chesae, this length exactly equal to circumference. Right, that is two pi R equal to emavutundi, the circumference is equal to the breadth, that is how much? Forty four, two ones, two twenty twos and twenty two by seventy into R equal to how much? So twenty, then twenty two by, so two pi R, two pi R equal to forty four and. Ah so two two cancel, so twenty two and R equal to emochindi? Seven ochindi, R antachilli? Seven, now we have to substitute here, that is twenty two by seven into R and and the seven into seven into. Height, what is the height, height is how much? Twenty five, seven, seven cancel, right? So two sevenths and nah, so ekadu e musundi, twenty, twenty five, twenty two sevenths and two sevenths, fourteen. One fifty four into twenty five, right? So multiply then same thing, so this three point eight five double zero usundi, right? So other letters lo convert chesta, so directly, so we will get how much? Three point eight five liters usundi. Okay, multiply jese and three eighty five triple zero, ah double, zero usundi? Three eighty five double zero usundi, double zero and letters lo convert jesa, three point eight five liters usundi. Only simple thing, last multiplication, okay na? Right, so yepudena sari, okadha rectangle ni fold chesae, it converts into a cylinder, cylinder kenda convert avutundi? What is the condition? One length is equal to the height and another length is equal to the circumference of the circle. And manu conditional diagrams lo chetam manam, three dimension. Howna, right? If alpha and beta are the roots of X square plus three X minus two, what is the equation of ah? Alpha cube and beta cube, alpha cube and beta cube. Alpha cube and Beta cube is how much? I don't know, right? So, if you, what is Alpha plus Beta? Alpha plus Beta is how much? Minus three and Alpha Beta is how much? Minus two, what is Alpha plus Beta? Alpha plus Beta formula is minus B by. Minus, minus B by A formula and what is Alpha Beta? C by A formula, you think that? Ona, so what is minus B by A and minus three by one, minus three and C by A means minus two by one means? So, Alpha plus Beta, minus three, Alpha Beta and two. We have to find the quadratic equation whose roots are Alpha cube and Beta cube and find out. X, X square minus X into Alpha plus Alpha cube plus Beta cube plus Alpha cube Beta cube equal to how much? Zero, this is my quadratic equation. First, Alpha cube, Beta cube, first, Alpha Beta, we will find out, Alpha cube plus Beta cube, check. How we can write A Q plus B Q, Alpha cube plus Beta cube formula? Alpha plus Beta whole cube minus three Alpha Beta into Alpha plus Beta. And the Alpha plus Beta, minus three whole cube, minus three into Alpha Beta is minus, minus, two, minus two into Alpha plus Beta and A, minus three and A, minus twenty seven. Minus, ah, nine two, three to six, three, eighteen and the, so minus thirty and minus forty five. Minus forty five, minus of minus plus forty five and plus forty five, option, option B. And the, the equation, minus forty five, minus forty five, minus forty five into minus, minus into minus, plus forty five. So, what is the answer? Option B is the right answer. So, if you, quadratic equation, actually, simple question. Sometimes, different, different, X power six, X power five. Each, one cases, polynomial concepts. So, our styles, nature of roots, used, alpha plus beta, Alpha Beta, geometry progression, check. Alpha Beta equal to one, symmetric manner, increase or decrease, multiply, divide, receive, local, general, general equation, different, different cases, polynomial. So, this is a general problem it is given, right? So, problems easily we can do, okay? So, five different, five cases, five cases, so any polynomial equations, quadratic equations, easy to find out. Okay now, so this is about today's session, so in next session, some more problems we will discuss, right? Thank you.